And.
And Brittany said she did hers.
Yeah, but she I haven't back in.
I I I saw where Brittany said it. I did not see where Tom said he moved it.
He said it then just. It's what he told me. I mean, I got a. A text message from him saying that he had done it.
Okay.
That's right, Gina was doing.
You are welcome to correct bad bad grammar and stuff like that, which is frequent enough.
Eight thirty, so all the workshop meeting in the Harlem Township. So we can make sure order. And since our secretary is not present, I'll call the role of Tom Need. We agree well.
Here.
Mike Kavler here, Joni Manson.
Here.
Alan Zaco. Brittany Hoprick. So Tom and Brittany are absent and Alan is also absent. Did either Tom or Brittany get online?
Tom is online.
Oh, okay. Well, Tom, I bet you're there. Uh, sure. Hi, Scott. Turn on the mics because and Scott, when you get over that table there, turn that press that red button so that the mic is on.
All right.
On actually means the button is out, not in.
Yeah, if it's down, I mean, if it's real short, it's off. It needs to be up. I had turned it off earlier. Uh, because I started the meeting before we started the recording. All right, um. Well, uh, the other township representatives present. Mr. John Trainer, one of our trustees is present tonight.
Good to be here.
And then, of course, Scott Sanders is here because Scott is here to review with us. Uh, Articles twelve and fourteen and then possibly beginning discussion also on. Um, Article twenty-two signs and billboards. Uh, Mike Cannon is going to be joining us. I told him that since his primary interest was at signs and billboards that if he wanted to plan to arrive around eight o'clock. That would probably do well for him since uh. Um, we will spend time discussing the other two articles first. Uh, we don't have any. Members of the public joining us online. Uh, Tom Need. Uh, member of our zoning commission is ill, but he joined us online. He was well enough to uh to participate in that manner. Uh, Brittany Hoprick, I spoke with her. I didn't speak with her. She sent me a text today. She's likewise under the weather. And if she said if she felt well enough, she would. Get online, but I don't see her there yet. Somebody she's not feeling well enough to join us. And Alan, I I'm not sure. I didn't get any word from him, but he may have had a conflict. Um, because this is not a usual meeting day for us, but we scheduled it as a special meeting in order to uh. Uh, allow us to continue to move the process forward because we needed to have us. Another meeting to deal with changes that were being proposed with regard to Article thirty-six. And then Article thirty-seven, Article thirty-seven has now been paused, so I don't know when that one will be coming back. For members of the uh public, if they join us, I will uh make some further announcement about participation in the process that we would follow. All right, with that, um, I think Scott, real quickly, I think we can handle the minutes because we reviewed them prior. Uh, to the meeting and those anyone that had comments were submitted and. Louis has indicated that since he was absent from this meeting, uh, he didn't see a need to to look at it specifically in terms of um. Making any comments, so. Uh, for those, well, be you and I, Joni.
Yeah, uh.
You see everything that you.
I I see one spot on page three, the next to last paragraph where the um edit was not accepted. That was just a lower casing and I.
So page three.
Next to last paragraph.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
Lot they could rebuild and there's. Yeah, for some reason that that deletion didn't disappear, did it?
Well, that's that's one she didn't accept yet, probably.
Yeah.
Oh.
Maybe she missed it, although I.
It is.
I thought that you, you know, depending upon when it happened, it may have happened after she had accepted the other changes, I suppose. That's the only one.
The only one I see right off the. Just jumped out at me.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the.
Mike, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Hi, Tom.
Hi, I don't know if I'm too loud or too too soft. Um, is with uh I I did go through the minutes. I'm I'm okay with uh with what Ashley gave us. But I have one question about uh the last paragraph on the bottom of page three.
Page three, okay. And now direct me again to the paragraph you're concerned about.
The last paragraph, the last sentence in the in the last paragraph.
There was discussion for summary view on Article thirty-seven that was hopper would like looked at during the rewrite. See attached document.
Does that mean that there should be some document attached to these minutes?
Um, those are the documents that she that were distributed to us.
I understand, but should they be attached to these minutes as official as as documents that we considered?
Yes, um, those those documents or those pages will need to become a part of this when she prepares them to go into the minutes book. That's correct.
Okay.
Because it says see attached document and she didn't attach it to this because we all have it.
That was that was my only question.
Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion in to approve the workshop minutes of February tenth. As corrected with a reminder to Ashley to um accept the change that was noted on page three next to last paragraph. And to attach the document that is mentioned on page three, last sentence of the the page.
All right, and I and I will second the motion. Um, discussion. Hearing none, um, and we'll move forward with the action on the motion. All those in favor of approving the workshop minutes for February ten, sign of saying aye. Aye? Oppose? No? All right, the minutes are approved. Okay. Um, we don't have anyone present uh. They consider the possibility of an application, so with that now, Scott, we're going to come back to you. Although before we do that, Mr. Trainer, did you have something specific that you wanted to uh address with the commission at this point? Are you just here more as an observer?
I am here as an observer.
Okay.
I uh would be happy to speak to some things that are happening. In the township and around us, but let's not take your time here at the front end or Scott's time. Maybe if there's time remaining at the end.
Sure.
Or I could simply wait until the next zoning commission meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um. All right, Scott, coming back to you then with twelve and fourteen. Is there anything uh specific as in terms of. These particular articles that you want to address with us? I know that we've had a copy of this. You made just a few minor changes in the original document. Is there anything additional that you have since thought of that you need to bring to our attention?
Um, not really. I mean. Like it's been a while. Was it January?
Yes, it has. We started back in December.
Um. Yeah, I mean, I didn't. I I know I I thought I might have listened to part of a meeting where you had talked about this some and. Maybe tried to remember whether maybe we did talk about combining them, but then. We just determined it was best to just leave them separate.
Right.
So that's what this that so that shouldn't generate any other.
Yeah.
But there really wasn't much to change in either of these articles. Minor corrections from zoning commission to zoning inspector. Um, checking on the lot size screening. And that's.
Yeah, well, that was the biggest change really is including something with regard to lot size because there was nothing in there previously. Uh, now, our last meeting. Um, Brittany had. Brought up and she's not here tonight, but the possibility of. Um, including some additional requirements under the development standards that um. Aren't currently included. And I don't know whether anyone has any thoughts in that regard in addition to Brittany or not. Uh, Scott, I will ask you. Uh, with regard to what we have in the development standards in terms of this straight district. Is this typical? Uh, I know that originally this would have been the county. Um, document that was submitted to the townships in Delaware County. This has been our standards. Since nineteen eighty-eight, we haven't changed them, except maybe a minor change here or there.
I mean, other than revisiting that first table that. Tom had put together, which I don't. I didn't think I was gonna have to try to look for it. And just see if there were things that were missing. I don't I don't think there's anything egregiously different. Again, with a with a street district, you have to be a little bit careful not to put. Too many things that become development. I mean. You're not really going to judge these based on. They propose all these details and.
No, there's no proposal, right?
Right, so you it's just whether it's an appropriate spot and of course your zoning inspector or staff. Has to consider whether they're meeting. The standards and ultimately we're hoping that not.
Right, we would be encouraging people to move in a different direction than going here, either going to a planned. District or using the overlay district. Um, Tom indicated that he had booked. And found that um. There aren't any district, there aren't any properties approved, I think, under Article twelve. But there are. And Tom, you're still online, so I don't remember the number you said, but there were quite a there are quite a few that are approved under Article fourteen neighborhood commercial.
Uh, that that's correct. There were there's nothing in the township that I could find that is zoned is currently zoned C one. Uh, there's a probably a dozen parcels uh that are zoned C two. Uh, a couple along State Route thirty-seven. Uh, one down along County Line Road, East County Line Road. Um, and a few in maybe three or four in uh Center Village. And the rest of them along Fancher and then scattered through that lower. Southwestern quadrant.
All right. And nearly all of those, I I don't know specifically which ones off the. Uh. Top of my head, but nearly all of them would would have been approved. Uh, at the time that the zoning resolution was adopted, that is back in nineteen eighty-eight.
I I I didn't look for that.
Commercial properties that got. Got that zoning and then, of course, were grandfathered because they were already in place.
Yeah, I know. I know that this.
Parcels.
I I know there's one that we approved that that was approved of for commercial zoning while I was on the board, which would be sometime in the last twelve or thirteen years.
Right, right, there's. Um, so. We can't. I mean, if we change the development standards. Um, we have to be careful there, too, then we potentially could create non-conforming uh properties.
I think the current development standards that we have are are the ones that are. Pretty much in anything and probably pretty common to other townships as well.
These should be common to other townships. That's why I was asking Scott because I think, as I said, these came originally from the county.
Yeah.
And were you were utilized in as a basis for adopting zoning in a lot of townships.
Yeah.
In Delaware County, that is.
Yeah.
Um, I I've I've got I've got a question to raise about um. The development standards um. In terms of uh. The wording about building size. Uh, in twelve oh six, a building size, it ends with the last sentence is limited to one structure per parcel tractor lot. And that's a two acre lot.
Limited to one structure per parcel or lot tractor lot?
Yes, that's the last sentence under a building size.
Yeah, a building size, right.
Yeah, it's the same sentence in both Article twelve and fourteen.
Uh, it's close. The the other one says no more than one structure shall be located and I'm. I'd I'd like to hear thoughts on whether that's realistic. I mean, you take a two acre parcel and you say you can only put. One structure, either three thousand or five thousand square feet. Um, that leaves a huge amount of open space. I mean, three thousand feet is a large private residence. Um, and we allow. Accessory buildings.
Yeah, but there's they also have their parking. For these commercial. Lots.
Well, this this is building size, so this is the size of the building.
Yeah, but he's saying with with two acres.
One limited to one.
Within two acres, you've got eighty eighty-six thousand square feet and you've got a three thousand square foot building.
Hmm.
Yeah. Um.
But I think that goes back to the fact that there was no lot size before, and so the building size kind of suggested. What the lot size would be.
Okay, so if we change this lot size, I don't know. Without checking, uh, and we make it a minimum of two acres, which makes sense that we would do because that's consistent with everything else in the township. Well, that create non-conforming lots.
Well.
And if so, is there a way or that we could then?
No, I don't think there are. A commercial um. Parcels in this township that are more than two acres.
But there are some that are less than two acres.
That's what I'm getting at. There are some that are less than two acres. See, so we're saying it has to be a minimum of two acres and there are approved.
Okay, which ones would be less than the two acres? If they're in Center Village or the old Harlem Village, then they're covered under a separate. If they're. Article, if they're in those two areas, which were would have the smallest lots.
Yes, if they elected to change that zoning. It wasn't the commercial one wasn't automatically given to them, was it? Don't think it was.
Hmm.
I mean, if they're. Today, well, I don't know how you're.
I don't want to create non-conforming laws if you know.
Yeah, your zoning inspector just has to have good records of. As of the date that this amendment might happen. Here are the ones that are already zoned that way.
Yeah, that's that that's what I meant. We could put that language in there. So that they wouldn't be they wouldn't be made non-conforming then.
But while we're talking about it, I mean, what about? It is odd that no more than one structure. I mean, you have to wonder if if they're gonna do a. Is the structure that holds the dumpster gonna be counted as a structure? Are there businesses that have some accessory buildings? What if that one structure language was taken out? Is that a danger? You have two acres.
I don't think there's a problem with any of the accessories type things like the the dumpster area or, you know. A shed or whatever for the lawnmower. Um. Accessory buildings, I think, maybe we should we should say this is limited to one.
Primary.
Primary.
After. Probably just primary.
Yeah.
I think you.
I think we have a definition for primary, maybe.
Primary structure.
Yeah. Oh, that would.
Let's look in our updated version here.
Yeah.
Principal use. No, we don't have any, at least it's not doesn't start with primary.
Hmm.
Structure, anything constructed or erected. The use of which requires location on the ground or attachment to something having a fixed location on the ground. Among other things, structures include buildings, mobile homes and billboards.
Okay, we do have an accessory use or structure definition.
Everything instead of using the word primary, we should say principal structure. I think we.
We use principal use a lot.
Have building comma principle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll call it principal instead of primary.
Right.
What is the definition of principal building?
A building which is in which is conducted the main or principal use for the lot on which said building is situated.
See, that that is a definition.
Yeah.
So we use the word principal building then instead of one structure, one principal building.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Change that would have to change on in both articles.
Right, so the change in the language there, so it would say limited to one principal building. So that it matches, it fits with the definition.
That sound reasonable, Scott?
But it will still say no structure shall contain one.
Yeah, that part would be fine. I think.
Say five thousand or three thousand?
One's five and one's three. Uh, C two is five.
Two is five, okay.
One is three.
Yes.
Uh, yeah. And so far as the the lot size, um, are we comfortable changing it to what Scott has proposed here? No lot size for two acres.
Um, how how does that how does that drive with what Joni was was bringing up about uh the Harlem and Center Village districts where the lot sizes are? Zoned smaller, a fifth of an acre.
Well, then they would apply to. For uh zoning uh application, put in a zoning application to be in. In that commercial.
Yeah, they wouldn't have to apply for this, uh, if there's an. If somebody wants to apply for a commercial activity within. The old Harlem area, uh, they wouldn't apply for this. They would apply for it under the um. Uh, I don't remember the name, but it's Harlem.
Center, well, it's historic center village, commercial district, yeah.
That's it. So and that would allow then, that would allow for commercial activity. Um, without.
Yeah.
In this app, this section and this article would not be applicable.
And I I don't know how big the lot is that that pizza place is down there on Gorsuch. Is it on Gorsuch?
Uh, yeah, so Shelly Pizza, Shelly Pizza is on point five one oh acre.
And that that one is, that's a good one to think about because that's.
That's C two.
Maybe three.
That's C two?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, because it's commercial business kind of thing.
Yeah, that would be under the but. And right now, we don't have any, um, we have none. No. Buildings or no parcels in the township that are zoned under Article twelve, Neighborhood Office District.
As far as I can tell, that's correct.
Yeah. Um, now, we're going to use that same language in Article fourteen in terms of lot size.
That's what Scott has proposed.
Yes, that's what I mean. Well, let's let's finish up with Article twelve. Is there anything else with Article twelve that we think we need to do with it? Are we ready for the next draft and?
Well, um, I I had some notes. I have to read through them. This is um. We're still on the development standards. Um. Letter L.
Under L. Okay. Great loading area.
Yeah, when any use within this district requires the pickup or delivery of merchandise or supplies, an adequate loading area. For such activity shall be provided on the lot occupied by the use. No such loading area shall be located on any public street. No such loading area as provided shall be adequate and or such loading area. Shall be adequate to accommodate tractor trailer units with adequate room to permit entry. Um. So, um, in some of these lots, that's that's already, I mean, the. Um. For for casinos, I don't think it's a problem. They can pull into the driveway and in the parking lot, I think is big enough for truck.
So wait a minute, you're talking about fourteen then?
I'm I'm no, I'm talking about twelve oh six L.
Because they're the same.
Yeah, well, that that's what I mean.
Yeah, but I'm but I'm saying if I I mean, for one, I don't know why an office.
Yeah, it is the same, okay.
Would would need a tractor trailer uh bringing in, you know, reams of paper. I don't know.
Well.
Um, I mean, you know, usually I I mean, it could be, you know, you imagine, you know, the trucks that come in to deliver for UPS. Um, FedEx. Amazon, they're generally, you know, parcel delivery trucks.
Mm hmm.
Two axle parcel delivery trucks and they don't need that kind of space and they can pull quite well off the road in most cases. Uh, but when um. Uh, when um.
I think all they were trying to say in this is that if you're having a delivery, they shouldn't park in the street. To make that delivery.
And it's. Yeah, we're we're kind of saying that that the loading area, even if you never have a tractor trailer delivery, you still need to have space for a tractor trailer delivery. And I think that's, I think that's absurd.
Well, I don't know that it says that. I mean, it's more permissive. It says when, and I know it's. How does this really work out in real life? I realize that's a question, but. It is worded that if it requires it, then it shall be provided, so. Your business. I know it's record keeping, but maybe it's an office that doesn't have it. And then they try to convert it over and the records show that they don't have. You know, ten years from now, they try to convert it from an office that that promised that they wouldn't have such deliveries. And now they want to have it. You can say, well, this whole thing has been built so that you don't. You can't get it in there, you know.
Um. I don't know. It says when any use within this district requires the pickup or delivery of merchandise. I don't know, it says, when any use within this district requires the pickup or delivery of merchandise or supplies. Um, and then it says such loading, and I don't think it says, there it doesn't say, you know, what kind of, what size truck or how much area. I don't think it, um, I mean, as, as I read it, it doesn't, it doesn't mean if you're using semi trailers, you've got to have space for them. It means if you have any, any delivery, you have to have space for a tractor trailer. That's the way I read it. And I'm sure we could, we could adjust it so that if you bring in tractor trailer loads, you have to have space so you're not in the public way when you're unloading. But when you come to fourteen, that's gonna be a big problem.
Well, right now, for example, um, there is a tractor trailer that stops to make deliveries at the little store here on the corner of six oh five and Center Village.
The Centerville, the Centerville.
They block the street, they park there, they unload, they unload beer, whatever, but mostly it's, it's what I remember seeing, it's primarily a bear truck.
Large box.
Yeah, it's not a huge tractor trailer, but it is a tractor trailer as opposed to just being.
More complaints about people not being able to see.
Yeah, people have complained about it for that reason, because it blocks the traffic.
And it blocks the view of oncoming traffic.
Yeah. It makes it, I don't think we've had an accident, um, there, but I know people have complained about it. I don't know whether you heard a complaint yet, Mr. Trainer or not, but there have been complaints about it to the trustees. For that very reason, but there's no, there's no possibility that they could um, do anything other than potentially pull along the side over here on, on six oh five if there's no one parked there. And get off the road. So I don't know whether that be, that, that's something that, that we that relates to this, but it, it, there's no way to solve it.
Well, what, I have a what if, what if, instead of saying tractor trailer, semi trucks, units, that's weird, units. What if it just says such? Um, that's the loading area for such activity. Such loading area shall be adequate in size to accommodate.
The delivery trucks.
The appropriate delivery trucks, I mean.
Just the delivery units or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, you potentially have a use that would convert and then need the semi trucks, but then you can always say, well, you can't convert to that use because I don't know that they.
So to accommodate, instead of say tractor trailer, cross that out and say delivery units.
Don't put anything there at all, just say shall be adequate in size to permit entry to such loading area. Just drop that whole phraseology in the middle.
Okay, go after size across everything out until we get to, to permit entry.
Yeah, after the word size, if we cross that phrase out and go to permit entry to such loading area without interfering with traffic or adjacent streets or highways. That'll work. Well, Scott, I think it works.
Yeah, so, so whatever vehicle's delivering, whatever they're delivering, has to be able to.
Not interfere with the traffic.
Right, get in and out safely.
We'll make the same change on fourteen.
And make the same change on fourteen, correct?
Uh, fourteen oh.
It's the same.
It's same, it's the same letter, it's L also.
This comes on, on the next page.
Adequate in size to permit.
Adequate in size to permit entry, entry to such loading area without interfering with traffic, et cetera, all right?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so, um, any other comments on twelve?
Um, give me a second, I was, I gotta go through these notes. In, in, under H.
H.
Um, where it starts off, all commercial and office areas. And I would take out commercial and, because this is strictly an office district. And I don't think it should refer to commercial at any, of any kind.
Yeah, this. We don't have commercial in this one at all, so you're right, I think deleting the word commercial would make sense there.
Isn't an office a commercial business? Still?
But if it is, then it's an office.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this district is specifically Neighborhood Office District, not Neighborhood Commercial.
Although if you look at the, the purpose of it on section twelve oh one, the intention is to create a district which will regulate future commercial development and foster expansion.
And I was gonna get back to that.
And then the, the final part of that paragraph says to develop neighborhood oriented office facilities.
Oh, oh, wouldn't it be better to be more general and just say all developed areas and structures shall provide a screen?
Well.
It's specifying the use.
We could take a commercial and office in front of that for screening and just all areas shall provide a screening.
I think Scott's with developed areas, I like that wording.
Because now that we've got principal building and accessory building, you really want screening around all of them.
Yeah, so we say, under screening, it would say all developed areas. Scott, what do you think?
Intent. That if there's a house next to it, you're gonna want it buffered.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way the phrase is in there is not trying to be specific to the use, it's just saying.
Well, there's areas that, yeah.
It's almost interpreting, I mean, whoever designs the site is gonna know what they need to screen. I know that you can't always assume they will, but.
All right, and that's screening.
They're gonna screen based on what's around. Yeah, like what's better than saying one two foot tall shrubbery per five feet.
Don't want that at all.
All that, cuz I think that's a.
All right, well, under H, we have the same, uh, paragraph in development standards under section fourteen oh six, so the change that we're going to make in twelve, we would also do it in fourteen.
Also includes commercial and office areas, so it's just fine there.
Well, that's true. We wouldn't have to change the wording under fourteen.
I mean, why not just make it the same, though, if we're trying to screen around the developed areas of the, the parcel, why not just, it could be the same.
Around the actual office itself, is that what you're saying? The principal building, as well as the, um, trash collection and service areas? Because we only providing screening of shrubbery so as to hide trash collection areas and service areas from view.
Right.
I mean, yeah, the way that it reads now, it's kind of saying that we want screening around the office areas, um, but if, I'm okay if that's not what we want.
I'm okay with requiring screening around around the principal structure.
Hey, that's not what either of these say.
It doesn't seem to be the intent of that.
No.
Well, it's a developed area or an office.
Well, the, the original.
Read the rest of that sentence.
The intent started out as just screening.
Starts out saying all developed areas, but then it, it goes on to say, so as to hide trash collection areas and service areas from view, it's not the way that it's worded, it wasn't intended, I don't think, to, to refer to the complete building, the principal structure.
I have another idea, since landscape is covered, kind of, it, under M, which is pretty general. You know what, this is just screening screening of shrubbery fencing or wall shall be provided so as to hide trash collection areas and service areas, cuz that's what the intent of this is, you're screening, can't screen.
For, for under H, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, just start it with the word screening.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that first, right, I mean, not that it matters what the original intent is, which you do want, but the intent was, in this district, screening shall be provided to hide trash collection and service areas. And then the other part's landscaped, but you can't screen a building.
Right, you can't screen a whole building.
I like that.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, all right, Scott, thank you.
Okay, so give me that sentence that you just changed it to here.
All right, so we're really just taking out all commercial and office areas shall provide a screen.
Okay.
And instead, it's screening colon, and then, I don't know if that works, but shrubbery fencing or wall shall be, a screening of shrubbery fencing or wall shall be provided so as to hide trash collection.
Yes, we wanna keep the second sentence in order to maintain the screen. Should be properly maintained and let, and not let the tree read over time, or let the, uh, live plantings die and not be replaced.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, that's good. Now, the same wording then could also go in fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've got mounting, which we don't have in twelve.
And under H there.
Twelve, we have artificial fence, but under fourteen, under the screening, we've got artificial fencing or mounting.
I don't have mounting.
Or wall.
Well, I don't have mounting.
Maybe I'm looking at all of them.
Under fourteen, or, or, or artificial is crossed down.
Yeah, we, we've deleted that.
Okay, maybe I'm, I think I'm working.
Said all commercial, yeah, it does say fencing, but it, it, the word artificial. Oh, you're looking at it all.
Yeah, yeah.
Mine's from twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
I'm mostly right.
Okay, good. Uh, does that finish us with twelve?
Well, um, I'd like to go back to one of the, one of the ideas that's carried over from twelve to fourteen, uh, in terms of this idea of neighborhood. So in twelve, it says, uh, in various ways, designed to serve the local community, not designed to serve the public at large, um, designed to serve the limited neighborhood area as opposed to the community at large. Um, I.
Where is this?
Uh, I'm, I'm looking on, on the first page of both articles, under, under the purpose and the application. So, twelve oh one and twelve oh two.
I'm not seeing the wording that you say you're seeing there.
Well, under twelve oh two.
Application, under twelve, it does say, I think that's what he's referring to.
There specifically says, at the end of that first sentence in twelve oh two, it says, it says designed to serve the local community.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm not sure whether that means a few blocks around the store, um, quadrant of the township, entire township, I, I don't, I, I don't know what it means. But we get into other wording similar to that in fourteen, um, fourteen oh one, purpose not designed to serve the public at large. Uh, and fourteen oh two, at the end of fourteen oh two, uh, designed to serve the limited neighborhood area as opposed to the community at large. Um, and for one, I think, I, I've got a problem with limiting somebody's business in that fashion. Cuz I think it, it, it makes it much more difficult to, uh, to create a profitable business when you're limited in your margin, your market to, uh, very few families in the surrounding area. It would be like we told Shelly Pizza, you can't, or, or for Casos, you can't serve anyone unless they're, they can prove they're from the township.
I don't, I don't see that at all.
Well, what is, what does the public at large mean? What does local community mean? What is it, what does any of that mean?
Closer than yours, Tom.
Tom, are you referring to under fourteen oh two, the second paragraph? Provision of this article shall apply to all proposed uses which are designed to serve the limited neighborhood area as opposed to the community at large. That's, that's the paragraph to which you're referring, am I correct?
That's, that's, that's one of, that's, that's, there's two or three, there's three uses I can see within those, within twelve oh one, twelve oh two, fourteen oh one and fourteen oh two, which are basically purpose and application for each one of these districts, that restricts the use to somehow a neighborhood.
Well, we don't want a Walmart moving in.
You're not gonna have a three thousand square foot Walmart.
If you do that with, I, I think some of that is problematic, because it's hard, you know, the fact that we're interpreting this differently now is just evidence that it could be interpreted differently in the future. So you limit that by your square footage and your, well, we don't have a maximum lot size, but we have a minimum. But, yeah, I mean, I agree that you, we all define local community differently. And you're not gonna tell somebody that they have to limit their clientele, you just, you do that through square footage of the building.
That, that, that limits the size.
Many differences between this first one and the C one and C two.
That would effectively limit the size of the operation and therefore the scale of services they can provide.
I mean, I don't mind references, small, pleasant, safe, convenient and local community, but then to, when you add a phrase that says, and not, not to serve the community at large. You know, I don't mind making, putting it in people's minds that we're talking about small business, but then to say, hey, we're, we don't want their, you, you do that through your square footage.
Could we just end the, end the paragraph at neighborhood?
Well, it depends which one we're looking at.
Fourteen.
But delete the phrase.
So that it's similar to, uh, twelve oh one.
If we delete the phrase, uh, as opposed to the community at large.
Well, if we, if we talk about the, uh, purpose first.
Yeah, there's a phrase under fourteen oh one, and then there's that phrase under fourteen oh two.
Right, so the fourteen oh one language, if we make that, if we remove the yet not designed to serve the public at large, just strike that part.
I think so. A bank might not give you a loan if they knew that the language said that you can't serve the public at large.
So we put a period after the word neighborhood and delete the rest of that. Does that work, Scott? Do you see any problem with that?
I think so.
In the first paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, is there any reason not to make twelve oh one and twelve and fourteen oh one exactly the same?
Except for commercial and office, I would think so.
I would agree.
Fourteen oh one says, opportunity to develop small neighborhood shopping areas. Twelve oh one says, opportunity to develop neighborhood oriented office fa- facilities. Okay, so, small, small neighborhood shopping areas and neighborhood oriented office facilities. Okay, that's good enough.
Yeah, I think it makes sense that way.
All right.
And then we just have the word, which are small, pleasant, safe and convenient, and we don't have the word small, um, which is kind of a, I guess we have it in twelve oh one because we don't have, we have the word to develop small neighborhood shopping areas. Uh, we don't have the equivalent to develop neighborhood oriented office facilities, which are small. So we get the word small in one way or another, in each one of those first paragraphs. Um, the only other. Um, the only other thing I would, I would, I guess, point out is. Um, the intent of the Harlem, uh, it it is the intent of Harlem Township to create. A district and I would say an office district in the case of twelve oh one. Um. Which will regulate future office development instead of commercial development. And and the reason, the reason I suggest that is that the. Permitted uses in twelve oh three. Um, A, B, C, D, and E are pretty well. Copied into fourteen. Um. And the only difference is, is, is the retail. Uh, stores in fourteen that we don't see in in twelve. Otherwise, you can do in fourteen whatever you can do in twelve right now and and I would ask if, you know, is that. Does that bother anybody? It doesn't bother me, but it it, that's what we're allowing, we're saying fourteen is. Just like twelve, except you can do retail and you can't do retail in twelve.
Which is why we decided.
That is why we left them.
Exactly, exactly.
Uh, office, um, back to your point, Tom, about um. Saying regulate future office development, if we just scratch the word commercial, just regulate future development, it would. Better align with the same language in fourteen oh one. Through the regulation of future areas and rehabilitation of existing facilities.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's fine, um. Um, I I think the wording in fourteen is a little awkward, but and then um. Whether we feel we have to say, you know, to create an office district. Which mirrors that the title of the article or just leave it the way it is.
Well, I think um.
I don't mind putting office there.
Where office district is fine there. And then the other one is to create a commercial district.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
Been jumping back and forth between twelve and fourteen, but we're basically, we're, we're changing the wording so that they're fairly. Similar, but they don't have to be identical.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I think we can get into fourteen, you know, I I think the wording in the middle of it is 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 very awkward, but we can. We can play around with that. Um. So then, uh. Go ahead.
Are you done with twelve?
Well, I was saying so, um. When we get into twelve oh two. We're getting back to, you know, what does, what does serving the neighborhood, serving a neighborhood mean, we're neighborhood oriented. Um, shall apply to all proposed uses which are designed to serve the local community.
And you see a problem with that?
Um.
So what, what's the problem?
No, I would say, w- a- as long as it doesn't say. To the exclusion of anybody else, they're designed to serve the local community and we welcome outsiders. You know, not, we don't have to say that, but but essentially that's what it's saying. Um, I think it's fine, that that is fine, given what we've taken out. Um, but when we, I don't know if you want to do the the same. Um, paragraph in fourteen or you want to wait till we get to fourteen?
Let's, let's finish twelve here while we're on it.
Yes, Tom, is there anything else on twelve, but I'm at this point, understanding and tell me if I'm wrong. That you are finished with twelve.
No.
All right, so twelve. Scott, you've got all the feedback we're gonna give you on twelve, now we're taking a look at thirteen.
No.
What if any additional changes?
Did you say no, meaning that you're not done with twelve?
I'm not done with twelve.
Oh, I thought you were finished with twelve.
No.
My bad. Chair said you're done. What, what is it in twelve that you haven't addressed, Tom, please tell us?
So, under permitted uses. Um. I guess some questions about what we've. What's here and what's, what's allowed and what was permitted and what's not permitted, so under. Uh, office facilities, uh, for personal services. Insurance agencies, insurance brokers, real estate offices, law offices, et cetera. Um. We get to offices, physicians, dentists, et cetera. We don't say anything about clinics. And how? How extensive a clinic or laboratory are we going to permit? Or is that supposedly understood?
Three thousand square feet in size and fits on two acres.
And that's, that's what we are saying, but does, does an office mean an office and a clinic? Or if somebody wants to have a laboratory? Or a dentist wants to have, you know, uh, do his own molding and and tooth creation? Is that, is that an office now or is he's making?
Turned that's a dental office.
Uh, it's a. I mean, if we agree that 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 sort of thing is allowed, then I would like to see it spelled out so that it does. We don't leave it to the next zoning inspector to say. You can pull teeth, but you can't make teeth.
I'm, I'm, I just really think you're splitting hairs here, Tom.
I, I don't know, I, I can't understand what it is, Tom, that's bothering you about it.
Well, uh, uh, let's, let's say when we get down to to see offices of veterinarians. Is that gonna be an office for large and small animals? Clinic for large and small animals? Spay and neuter clinic, uh, boarding facility? What do we actually allow in?
Veterinary.
Offices of veterinarians.
Allowed to do. Veterinary. Operations. You come in with a, a, a dog that has a broken leg, it's gotta be X-rayed and set. It may need to be boarded for a while afterwards to make sure it's not, you know, tearing the. Uh, sutures out.
But I think if you were just boarding healthy. Dogs, I think that's a clear.
That's, that's different.
That's different.
Boarding kennel or something.
Well, we, we had a, we had a BZI that said, no, it wasn't. So I'm just trying to make things clear. To us as a group so that we can have it clear in the resolution, what we mean and what we don't mean.
Yeah, and isn't that just, isn't that kind of restricted by the size of the building?
Well, there's always.
Know what you're worried about as far as clinic, I mean, veterinary is a veterinary clinic. I guess you could call just about any clinic.
Then you have an accessory building for boarding.
Not necessarily an accessory building, it could be the same building.
But if you, if, if your clinic is three thousand square feet and you wanna. Board forty dogs, you build an accessory building. Which is allowed. I'm, I'm just saying, what, what do we, what are we permitting? And what are we trying to exclude? And we want to make our decision, the zoning inspector, the BZI, who's gonna make that ultimate decision?
Well, as far as. And 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 office of a physician should be able to do a number of. Clinical aspects, whether it is blood testing. Or. X-rays or, you know, bone density tests.
What about outpatient surgery?
Maybe. But I don't think most. Physician offices do that, that is almost always in a separate location. Like I could get an X-ray and a bone density test at my doctor's office and a blood test. Um. But there are other things that, you know. You can't get done. You can't get a broken bone set usually. At least I don't think I can at mine, they send me to another one.
We can't get an MRI.
You can't get an MRI because that's more specialized equipment.
That wouldn't be in a doctor's office.
Right.
Not a three thousand square foot doctor's office.
Or even a five thousand.
I know there's value in trying to narrow this down because you don't want to end up with. Unintended consequence, but. Like if you're trying to. Narrow it down so that you keep out everything. I think you could work all day. And. Do that.
And my point is, I'm not, I'm not trying to keep anything out, um, but I'm trying to define it in a ways that. That it's allowed, it's permitted. Without any question.
Would it be valuable to put something in here in relation to? Uh, the permitted uses only being allowed in the principal building, is that somewhere? Cause I think Tom mentioned something about like, well, what if you. It, you know, what if there's a veterinarian office and then they want to board dogs, so they build, uh. You know, extra building and then they start boarding dogs and that, I don't think that's the intent. Of being able to have an, you know, an auxiliary building. I think the intent is to have the, the permitted use in the principal building, right?
Uh, the vet over on. In uh, Genoa Township, put up a, a boarding clinic. We're boarding, I don't know what they call it. Um. Uh, that's part of his business, he brings in dogs. He heals them on site for a week or two and then off they go.
Which I think that would be okay, I think if that sort of thing is, you know, housed within that. Principal building that we have a size, you know, a size limit on. Um, versus if they, you know, oh, well, we outgrew our principal building, so we're gonna build another one. And we're just gonna be building buildings and letting people do whatever they want in these buildings, I don't think that's the intent, right?
But, but we are allowing an accessory building, at least one. Um. And um, I don't think we're restricting what they can do in the accessory building, whether it's storage of raw materials for. Um. You know, for retail operation, um, or, or a. Still for a, for a. Brewery or, you know, I mean, it's, it's an outbuilding, it's an accessory building, you need it, do what you need. Uh, to run your business, but.
So you're saying that somewhere we have in here that. We say. Accessory buildings are, are, you know, great and all, I don't see them listed.
Well, we, what, when, you know, we, we, we took out. It's now limited to one principal building per parcel. Tractor lot. And by principle, I assume we would allow accessory, if you've got a principal building, you can have accessory buildings. So what we do with residential lots. And what would you, what, what would a business do with an accessory building, but business?
It could also be an accessory structure like a wall built around a trash receptacle. Or storage.
Could be.
Well, um. Tom, it seems like the. Area of offices for the vet, of veterinarians was a significant concern. That it would not allow for. Uh, the vetin- a veterinarian to, uh, board and treat. Uh, animals that are brought in for service.
I disagree, I think it would.
Um, I know, I, I don't see it as a problem, but if we, Mike, the question is then, do we need to add a phrase that says that?
No. I don't think we do.
You think just the language of office of veterinarians would allow for that kind of, um. Service, those kinds of ser- uh, that's my assumption, that those kinds of services, that's what a veterinary office does.
Comes right down to it, we have D. Other offices similar in nature or character as determined by the zoning inspector.
There you go.
I mean, Tom, you said that you were trying to make sure. Uses could get in, but are you? I'm. Usually conversations like this have to do with making sure that certain things aren't allowed in, so. Was there something you were gonna make sure, that you were thinking, we didn't want to be too? Open here?
Well, all the notes that I have frankly are. Uh, business office uses that are not spelled out. Um, and, and with this kind of detail, it makes me wonder, okay, if you leave something out, is that, does that mean? Except for at the discretion of the zoning inspector, it's not allowed, or at the discretion of the BZI, it's not allowed. Um, and I guess at this point, I wanted to bring that up. Uh, to get it on the table so that we didn't just blow by it and say, you know, we're happy, uh, because I'm not. I'm not comfortable with the language that's here with the, with the. With the, the lists that are on the, on, on these permitted uses. And maybe it would be easier if, um, I don't know, we were gonna wrap this up tonight. Um, because if, if, uh. What, what I would suggest I can do is I can put some notes in writing. Of what I would like to see added into each one of these.
Got something in mind that you would like to see, you can make that request in terms of, uh, if there's some language that Scott may be able to bring back to us, because yes, there's. The whole idea here tonight is to provide the feedback so that we can get to the next draft, this is not.
Okay.
Final draft, we're not.
Okay, so why, why don't I do that, why don't I give, I'll send out, uh, notes in the next couple of days. Um, to the board and to Scott with how I would like to see some of these permitted uses expanded.
Keep in mind though, we have had this since January seventh. In this form.
Hmm.
We should have gotten stuff back to Scott in a much more efficient manner.
Maybe not.
Well.
Yeah, I take, I take your, I take your, your, uh. Your comment, but. We've never been asked to send Scott stuff directly. So I have.
I'm more concerned about a district that we're hope, hoping isn't gonna be used a lot.
Hmm.
And not spending too much time being. Honing it down too much.
Right.
And there's, you know, there's time to make adjustments when. People start trying to take advantage of it, I, I guess, I mean, I know that that's kind of a sad answer, I guess.
It's very unlikely that, uh, we're even gonna have somebody apply for this district. To make the change, I mean. We've got, with the overlays that we've got in place and the other options that are out there, um. It's very unlikely that anybody's gonna really try to use this, it's been here for. Since nineteen eighty-eight and so far we've not had a single application for it. Doesn't mean that we won't get one, but I'm just saying, it's, it's not something that I would anticipate is gonna be a high priority for people to use.
Uh, but C two is not that much different. And a lot of what's in C one is also in C two. And C two has been used and I see it as, as. As being used more frequently.
Yeah, C two, I would agree that that certainly is one that could be utilized more. So why don't you provide that, uh, feedback then, Tom, that you're talking about, provide that feedback. Submit that to me and I'll make sure that we forward that information over to Scott and we share it with the rest of the zoning commission.
Okay, done.
Uh, Tom, may I make this suggestion?
Sure.
That it is vain to attempt to list everything that we think might go into this district. As opposed to getting into specifics, I'd like you to think about what are the broad categories that should be included? So for example, when we have law offices. That's a broad category, office, medical offices would cover physicians, dentists, osteopaths, chiropractors, podiatrists, or anything else. And so if you, financial offices, bigger categories that cover a whole subset. That, that allow for breadth, that allow for a zoning inspector to interpret. And that don't get us into trying to solve the next generation's detailed problems. Yep, we thought about it, here's the category, have at it.
Fair enough.
All right. Uh, with that, then we're finished with twelve for tonight. Uh, with that, then we're finished with twelve for tonight. Any additional, uh, comments that are, uh. Applicable are going to be submitted. And I'll forward that information. And as Thomas pointed out, and we're all aware, what's in twelve is also. Uh, basically picked up again in fourteen. And then the difference being that in fourteen, we've added the commercial uses. Retail stores. Um.
Can I make one comment about fourteen?
Yeah. Yeah, I had asked Mike, uh, to make, uh, and told him that we would, um. Provide the opportunity to begin to. Look at the signs and billboards. So I wanted to make sure that before we get too late.
Yeah, but I, I do want to hear what Scott has to say about fourteen.
I think he misheard, but I just want to make one comment about fourteen oh two.
No, no, that's, that's fine. I'm just saying that I want to make sure that we do that. So, uh, it's twenty, it's. Uh, twenty minutes till nine, basically, uh, at this point. So if we continue. I beg your pardon?
It should be quick, I think.
Yeah, well, no, that's what I'm saying. Let's, let's try to. Wrap up what we're going to do with fourteen by nine o'clock so we can then start taking some comments. Uh, making some comments about signs and billboards. So Scott, go ahead.
Under fourteen oh two. That first paragraph.
Yes.
I think that whole thing needs to come out. Because it basically says. Like when this was first adopted, anything that's currently commercial. Falls under C two. And that's not what you.
That's, that's how we have done it.
But that's not what you want to do when this gets adopted. Cause now everything that's on the map that C two is going to stay C two.
Yeah.
And I think that just gives, I don't think anybody would interpret that, but. I think that would, I mean, somebody could.
Yeah, that does need to be rewarded.
And I, I mean, by just keeping the second paragraph, which, or the second sentence, which will now be very similar to C one, I think. I think that'll be sufficient and make them both similar without.
Yeah, and that will then also allow us to make sure that we're not. Going to cause a problem by creating non-conforming uses where they already exist. You're go, are you going to put language to address that as well in that same paragraph? Those businesses that are out there that are conforming now, they will continue to be, they will continue to remain conforming?
I mean, I don't. I don't think you need to. I think that's, it applies to your FR one when you make a change. You don't say that out loud. Or you don't list that, but anybody that's under FR one already in a smaller lot doesn't. I mean, that, that's just, that's your whole. All your businesses are in place at the time that some change gets made. Are, I don't like to use grandfathered because it's not official, but. It becomes legal and non-conforming.
Yeah, that's the thing. We don't want to create non-conforming ones. Even though they're legal, they can continue to operate. But then if there's a problem, it becomes an issue, potential becomes an issue.
I'll see if there's an easy way to.
As we did that, um, in a couple of other districts where we've used language to address that, to avoid. The problem, uh, developing. That we created.
Yeah. I'll look into that.
Okay. Uh, on fourteen, then we, if we look at a few more minutes here on that before we jump to, or are we ready to jump to signs and billboards?
Yeah, I don't know how much detail we can get into fourteen, given, given where we ended with twelve. If we dig too much deeper into fourteen.
Well, um. The retail stores. You know, i- i- if, um, there are some stores that are listed there that you think should be taken out, are there store, uh? Are there some that are listed there that should not be included?
I was wondering why we don't have any restaurants? In that list.
I thought it was in there.
Yeah, just taking a really quick look here, but I'm not seeing it.
Eating and drinking places where.
He did drinking places, doesn't use the word restaurants.
Drinking places. Okay.
Where services provided.
So that could be either a, a sit-down restaurant or a, a fast food. I mean, I think. Okay.
I think we've got some language in here that basically kind of prohibits, uh, drive-throughs.
Yeah. It does say. Yeah, drive-through facilities are not considered permitted uses.
Yeah, there it is.
But it also prohibits outdoor patios.
Oh, why, why does it do that?
Where services provided totally within the building.
Yeah, why can't, why can't I put a table and chairs outside for people to have a cup of coffee?
I, I, that's my question, but that's not what this says.
Oh, it is, yeah.
I agree.
Well, that's a, that's a different kind of question. That's not a drive-through.
Right.
That's a sit-down, you know, you're coming there to eat. Uh, and in fact, they're doing it. Over here at, um, Picasso's, they have a little patio. Uh. So the language that's there may need to be changed for that reason. But I'm not sure that we want to allow for, we want to change it so that we allow for drive-throughs.
No.
Like McDonald's and et cetera. Okay. Anything? If there's other things that you want to suggest for consideration, then am I, I'm going to encourage you to get that, that information again. As as with Tom, submit it. I'll forward it on to, to, um, Scott and I'll, I'll also then get it distributed to everyone else so that the next draft. That we look at Scott will have these things. Included. Okay. All right, then. Um. Some of. The, the items that we did address Scott with, with regard to twelve also being at fourteen, you will move those on.
That's right.
Yeah. All right, good. Then looking at. Signs and billboards. And I wanted to. Begin to provide some. Comments back to Scott and I wanted Mike to participate in this because he's had some issues that have arisen relating. To signs and billboards, well, not so much billboard, but to signs in, uh, the township. So. Um. Mike, you also, um, may or may not have seen, cause Scott has provided us. Signed comparison working documents. Did you get a copy of that? Okay. Good. So, uh, that compares. What's in the overlay districts. Uh, with what's in article twenty-two. And there are some differences. Um. I'll go to you first, Mike. Well, what, what are the issues that you want to see us address as we look at making revisions?
As it is an issue. No, I guess, well, yes, it could be, but. Well, I think we need to take a little bit of thought and revisit the whole sign. The no sign. Deal. I mean, like I see this where Scott's this under the overlay side. That wording there, the sign shall be designed to adhere to the rural design team utilizing natural materials. Um. Such, so I like that. And I think we need to change that because we're getting probably. I don't, they don't have a lot of business, but the BZA is getting a lot of business. From people wanting signs and every time they want to come in for something like that, that they want to sign out there, I've got to send it to the BZA to get a variance for it. And then the BZA. I don't want to say they're hesitant, but a lot of times they're, they're. Constrained by the rules that they have to follow, that they can't even let people put signs up. We've got one going on right now for the, the Westernville Estates down there that they want to put a, a. Sign up to replace the old terrible looking one that's there. And I think anytime you can. Clean it up a little bit, it would look nice, but there's question is where they can allow the sign they want to put up down there because of the constraints. Of. What? The zoning. Says. So I guess, and I was talking to John about this the other day and John brought up a good point. I mean, it. If we could possibly be open to thinking about, you know, the kind of sign, if we're going to allow these new housing developments or things like that, maybe we need to have a sign that conforms. To what we're looking for. You know, put in the design, put in the instruction. Of what we want to see on there, just like that overlay district says there. I think that's probably pretty good language to put on. Put in on our regular zone.
So think about. Can I chime in here? So think about branding. When you go into New Albany, there's a particular kind of sign that is throughout that community that communicates you're in New Albany. And when we planted a church there. We couldn't just put up any sign we wanted to design. New Albany Company or New Albany City said, hey. Here's, here's where you go to get your sign. This is, these are the dimensions. Blah, 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 and voila, we got a great sign. Um, but it, it made us a part of the community. And I think that one of the things we need to be thinking about. The township as a whole. Is, is branding, communicating who we are and character, architecture signage is a big deal. And can this, can this entity? Take on. Uh, that project a little bit. Um. As we're working through the strategic planning fa- project. And we're thinking branding. What does that look like in regard to signage? Is an interesting question.
I think we also kind of getting our. Hail on a ring or a little bit here and there, because just about anybody that comes in says they want to put a sign up. On their developments and I say, no, gotta go to the BZA. Uh, they bring up the fact that we let Keller Pines have a nice big sign over there. I'm sure there's something different, the reason we allowed that to happen, but.
That's a planned district.
That's a planned.
Exactly. So why do we allow on a planned district for signs yet? I mean, how is that any different? And I get, I know the difference between a planned district and I'm just saying, how is that any different? That we allow them to have a sign just because they're a planned district, but this guy over here can't have a sign on his house and development. That maybe isn't a planned district? I don't know.
Well, because they were in a planned district, they brought in what they. Wanted to put up a, as a sign and that was something that, that was approved as part of the. Uh, district. Development plan, when the development plan was approved. So that's how they got what they got.
I understand how they got it and I know the process and I, I understand that, but why is it that? That a planned district's not have a sign? And like. Down here with the Harlem Estates, is that what that's called over there? Wasn't allowed to have a sign.
The one on, uh, you're talking about the.
Corner of Harlem and, uh.
Just north of Center Village.
Yeah.
That one.
Because they didn't want to be a planned district, then they have to follow the rules for going to the BZA for that.
Yeah.
I, I get that, but then the BZA gets there and they say. According to the rules, we can't allow them to have a sign.
Well, we're, I'm, we're not saying that there, there shouldn't necessarily be a change made that potentially can allow for that.
Yeah.
But right now.
There's not. And that's what I'm saying. That's why I wanted to bring it up to the group and after talking with John about it to see if maybe is there, is there something we want to change? Is there something we want to look at doing? Cause a lot of them having it, you know, just like we, you know. Ivy Ridge kept pushing and pointing to them. They tried to put a sign up, made them take it down. Now they got two pieces of artwork at the entrance of their. Housing development down there.
Yeah, well, I think that, you know, what we're dealing with today is a lot different than what. Was in mind when people originally adopted the language in signs and billboards. They basically wanted to keep signs out. It was. They just didn't want any signs. And so as a result. You know, we've got what we've got. That's why they had to go through the BZA as a way to, to get approval for it. And then there are. There are guidelines or there are specific requirements in terms of what the sign can be. But if we decide that we want to use a particular approach to signs or. Uh. Like for the entrances to developments, because there's going to be a lot of those that are going to come our way. Now, right? As long as it's part of a. Of a planning process. There won't be an issue with those. But there will be some other instances where. Um. This, the general guidelines of signs and billboards would be applicable because it's not a planned district. And that's what you want to see changed.
Yeah, and even if it's just so much that we go so far as to allow the BZA. Whatever wording is, if they want to still control the signs. That we allow them that they, they can do those signs. They just have to go to the BZA to do it. Whereas now the BZA sits in there and goes, well, all these things say, is there any other way? Uh, is it, is it your fault or did it not happen? And they kick them out right away instead of it saying. In the zoning somewhere that you can take it to the BZA and they can use.
It says that in there already.
I don't know. I mean, it's an oddity of.
Oh, five. Describes how to go to the BCA for a sign.
Right, but the BZA and this, uh, what does it say? Uh, an oddity of, I think the original, I've seen this in other townships, so I think it all came from the. You know, the mother code, um.
Yes.
When it goes to the BZA, which is odd because BZAs should be looking at conditional uses, which means you have to justify. I mean, if they don't have rules to go by. They're used to seeing people ask for things that are unusual and they have to justify it. So I'm, I'm going to get to the point that. Yes, you should define what you want it to look like. It should be similar to the PRD. But I mean, they can have. Uh. Gosh, now I lost the page. But it does make a reference to commercial industrial, yeah, signs requiring additional use permit.
Right, there are freestanding signs that, uh, for industrial, commercial and office or office complex.
So they're going to look at that and they're going to say, well, that doesn't say residential.
Right.
That's why they're.
Now, is that, see, that's what I'm saying. Potentially, is that an area where we would? Want to change that to include residential?
I don't know how they all ended up going to. I mean, who came up with that years and years ago? Except that the zoning, it's not a rezoning. And so I guess they thought it was better to go to the BZA, but that is an odd. Group that isn't used to signs unless that's what they suddenly start doing all the time.
Yeah. And that's what's happened a lot, you know? If you can tell if your resolution's not good, if you've got a lot of business going.
Yeah.
Shouldn't they be the exception, not the, like, they should be dealing with the exceptions, not the rule, right? They shouldn't be like the sign authority. The Harlem Towny sign, sign shop.
I think for a, you know, for an FR one subdivision. I guess they have to.
A lot of information.
Make sure that it's in the right, well.
And it's not just for industrial and commercial.
No, it certainly isn't. Um.
You'd have to draw the line because if somebody does a three lot subdivision, they're probably not going to deserve. Same sign as Harlem Estates if they do. Twelve lots, right? So. Then you just have to work through how you. How you decide what that breakpoint is. And it's just a matter of size and location.
Is it the, the BZA just doesn't want to deal with this, Mike?
No, it's not that they don't want to deal with it. They feel like their hands are tied because when you bring something like that in and they say, you know, we don't want signs out there. The BZA looks at their four or five rules that they look at and says, okay, for us to approve a variance, because that's what it is. Is, is there some.
It's a conditional use permit.
It's different from a variance.
They, they don't necessarily have to get a variance. They get a conditional use permit.
They're going by their four or five rules that. Ends up kicking that out if you look at it.
Well, there's height limits and so forth and size and so forth, but.
But it is.
But are, are we, are you, uh, maybe suggesting that instead of going to the BZA, that these just be rules that are set up and that basically they would be. As long as they would meet the requirements, it would be approved by the zoning inspector?
Well, that'd be the easiest, but I mean, I don't care either way if we still wanted to go to them. Or what we want to do, but if we're going to set up like John was mentioning, you know, if we've got a uniform sign or anything, it'd be a lot easier for them just to come to me and I'd say, well, you can have a sign, but. This is what it's got to look like and.
I like. Uh, Louis' point that the BZA should not become your sign agency. Uh, that's not the appropriate use of the BZA.
We already got it that way, John.
Just saying.
I, I'm, I'm not saying that we necessarily need to keep it that way.
This is what they should be doing now.
But. That is what we have now. So that, that's the whole reason for having this discussion is how do we want to change that?
Yeah, that's what. And I think that's the way to change it.
Yes. Um, and we don't. I mean, it, uh, I guess I come back to Scott again in terms of, uh. He's already made the comments, Scott made the comment that seems kind of unusual that it's going to the BZA. In the first place, but it's been that way ever since this was written in nineteen eighty-eight.
Well, it's cause it was called a conditional use permit.
Yes.
Conditional use permits go to the BZA.
And it's just funny because the conditions are usually unusual, but their conditions would be. Twelve feet in height. Thirty-two square feet in area. I mean, it. Those aren't really, those are rules, those are rules, those aren't conditions.
And those could be. Handled by the zoning inspector, couldn't they?
Yeah, once you define them.
Yeah, sure. Should fall right under the sign. Yeah, sure. Should fall right under the signs that I can, you have to go to the zoning inspector.
And then if, if they want to deviate from whatever we put in as the requirements for the sign, then they would go to the BZA.
And then it would be, yeah, the variance more than anything else. They wanted to vary from the sign that they could have.
Well, and that's, that is the way that it's, it's set up right now for, uh, certain areas, what, what it was listed there, uh, but residential wasn't part of that list.
Yeah.
And is that mostly what you're dealing with is residential?
And commercial wasn't part of that list.
Yes.
It, it does say within any commercial or industrial district. But the commercial stuff is.
Well, and then the subregs say that if you have a CAD, you're supposed to have a sign that says private drive, although I think that's more of a regulatory sign.
Yeah.
I think you get around that. Yeah, I thought, I mean, just speaking more generally. The whole, I don't know what Bill, I don't know the difference sometimes between a billboard.
Well, I don't know.
Billboard is a single ground mounted sign.
Yeah.
Cause a billboard on, on the side of the interstate is not thirty-two square feet. I think, I think that term is bad. I mean, I've got some ideas already, but solving that is one. Getting rid of the word billboard because we all know what a billboard is and that's not what that is.
Billboard is there for advertising purposes primarily. It's why we, um, we would be using a billboard. But is it, is it feasible, Scott, from your perspective then that, um, for residential, I mean, trying to figure out what it is that, uh, other than the residential areas where there would be development that would, a development going in. That they could potentially develop a sign and as long as it meets the requirements, that the zoning inspector would determine that it does meet the requirements. It doesn't have to go to the BCA. Is that something that we would be supportive of? It makes sense to me to do it that way. But then if we're going to have specific requirements as to what that sign needs to look like.
Yeah, that's different.
That's a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Separate discussion.
We're going to get specified colors. We're going to specify type of material, uh, size, of course. That, that doesn't have to reflect a rural kind of a theme. I mean, there's, are those going to become part of the requirements?
Right here that you've got on the overlay part of it. Makes sense. That's on the science will be designed, go here to rural design theme utilizing natural materials such as stonewood or brick for eighty percent of the sign, blah, 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 blah. It goes on down and explains the colors and all that stuff. I mean, it's just that kind of thing. Now, unless that's something John, maybe you, you talked with the other two trustees about, I don't know, but if you want a certain sign, just like New Albany, I mean, theirs is pretty cut and dry.
It is.
This.
Yes.
You know, you don't get to choose what colors you want on it. You, yeah.
Yeah, I was sort of, we have to think through that whole concept of branding as a township. And determine if we like that idea, if we like it, what does it look like? So I think the, that conversation has to evolve here over the next several weeks and months. But the, this other idea seems very, very straightforward to me.
Who will be able to put forth the semi ideas as to what would be a standard for us to, I guess, adhere to when it comes to signage? Does that mean signage of, of any kind, or is it going to be signage that's going to be limited to uh, residential development?
That's what I was thinking. That's what's getting brought up more times than not is the residential signs out in front of the house developments.
One of the things we want to do this summer is send, uh, people on field trips to communities, right? With a list of objectives and one of those objectives might be observe the signs in Dublin or Powell or New Albany or Evans Farms. And, uh, what, what do you notice about the signage in both commercial and residential areas? Uh, size, lighting, design, et cetera. And then we'll, you know, bring this back to the township and have a conversation uh, about that. And, and then as a community, make decisions uh, in that regard. So I, I kind of imagine that unfolding here, uh, but that way we have community involvement in that process. Which I think would be very healthy. Uh, ultimately, certainly people have got to make a decision, but you see the process I'm talking about.
I'm, I'm concerned that this township has rejected the idea of like architectural design standards outside of these overlays. So these overlays that have come up with architectural design standards have been very different from what residents have said they wanted for years and years and years in zoning. Um, so as far as requiring non-planned districts and non-overlay districts to adhere to these kind of design standards is going to open up a whole can of worms that you might not want to.
Um, I'm all for opening up cans of worms. Um, I think what I'd like to see us do in, in the big scheme of things is kind of shift our Overton window a little bit. So things that maybe people thought were un-outlandish and unthinkable five or 10 years ago, they begin to think about as possible. Maybe even principle and policy. So, so here this window begins to shift. And then the only way you can get that Overton window to shift is to, is to begin a conversation about these things. So I, uh, I, I hope they're not afraid of the conversation. And I, and I believe that as we understand uh, kind of what's happening around us and we look forward 10 years, that some of these things become more palatable than they may have been in the past. But if we don't talk about it, if we don't consider it a possibility, we'll just never get there. Or if we're, if we're fearful of the response, I, I would be more compelled by desire of gain. Now, the more people that get out there and think about these things and bring these ideas back, the potential there is to shift the Overton window a little bit. So that's.
Tony, my, my, my thought on this, on the, like, if, if we would allow a sign to be part of a planned district. We like, we like what the developer came up with. We like the idea. It's a good looking sign. It's safe. There's no, um, traffic issues. Everybody likes this sign. It's part of a planned district. Okay. We approve it and go forward. The adjacent parcel is not a planned district, but they want to put a sign. It's a residential, it's been residential forever. It's a neighborhood. They would have put a sign similar to the one that we just approved in the planned district and they can't because it's a different, it's a totally different zoning. They're not a planned district. They're limited in what they can do with just the sign. It doesn't make sense to me why we would let this planned district build a sign that everybody likes. And we wouldn't let the neighboring zoning build the same sign that we like over here. We, but you can't build it next door. That doesn't make any sense to me just because one's a planned district and one's not. And, and that, that I think is the problem that.
I think that's how they react when exactly like that. When I tell them no, and they go, what about that? And I said, that's planned district.
Right. But, but to the average.
That's, that's what I'm saying. And, and I, maybe it does need to be changed, but there was an avenue for doing that. And it was called a, a conditional use from the BZA. But apparently the BZA doesn't do it.
I think it wasn't worded correctly.
But they turn them down. That's, you're right, because the I'm not speaking for all of them, but it seems like the attitude of the BZA is we don't allow signs. So unless.
But it's just wrong.
Unless it's not your fault, unless it's not this, unless it's not this, you aren't getting it.
Right.
That's an easy solve.
Yeah, that's just, it's just, it's not a system that's working. We can correct that. And that's why I'm here.
It sounds like listening to what John is suggesting that we may have to wait six months before we do anything. Maybe longer than six months.
I think you can.
About the summer.
I think you can solve Mike's problems pretty quick, but, but the sign design thing is a whole nother issue.
Right.
It's separate from what he's trying to do.
Well, then potentially we would be looking at making a revision in the signs and billboards article. And then making another revision later. Is that
Yes.
fitting with what you're thinking is at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, get the problem fixed now. And if we want to put a standard in later, we can do that once we figure out what we want.
Yeah. I'm not sure we'd ever get to a standard, but.
Maybe we won't.
Because of what Johnny say, uh, everybody has to conform to the standard. People in Harlem Township don't like to conform to anything. They want to be able to do whatever they want to do. It's my property. You can't tell me what to do.
I know.
But don't, don't bring up New Albany because the people don't like it.
Or.
Sorry, folks. We're going to have to, we're going to talk about that before we leave them.
Okay. Well, I think I understand then in terms of trying to go ahead and move everything forward. Move everything forward with the exception of considering a standard,
Yeah.
if you will, for what the signage would look like. That would come later. And that's where, uh, it's going to be months, a few months down the road. Because there would be an opportunity to follow through with what uh, John is suggesting that people would go out and take a look and bring back, okay, if we're going to have a standard. Um, this would be something for us to consider. And then it could be modified. Yeah. All right. That sounds good. Um, at this point though, Mike, if I'm, uh, hearing correctly, the biggest thing would be to look at the sign and billboard standards in terms of creating something, making changes that would allow for decisions to be made without it, without every um, decision having to go to the BZA. That it could be handled by conformance with the standards, which you would determine.
Yeah. And I think that like, like we've got on this, the design standards right there, that would be what I'd like to have something like that. Make sure they conform to this.
So all of the.
That part though comes later. That, that's part of this, the design standard stuff that we'll be discussing.
Yeah, but if somebody come in and say, I want to put a sign up for me to say, you can, but I'm, I want to be able to say, you can. Bring me your design based on this and we will see about approving it.
Yeah. All you've got to go by is, is really such freestanding sign shall be in harmony with the buildings on the site and not detract from the appearance of the general neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. Or be a traffic hazard and stuff. And then it gives some size.
Well, it's got signs and that's, yeah, et cetera, those kinds of requirements. Um, well, lighting is also, um, a consideration. Because lighting can be a problem for the neighbor.
Yeah. And I think when we're talking about those signs, it needs to be a little bit more muted lighting, not.
More, more muted than some of the ones we see.
Yeah.
Um, when you say down lighting, even down lighting doesn't do it. I mean, it really doesn't.
Cut off lighting or something.
Yeah.
There's got to be some
Very.
technical term that actually describes it then.
Well, I think that gives us some direction in terms of where, uh, we would begin to look at making some changes in signs and billboards. Uh, Scott, based on what you heard here tonight, uh, is there enough for you to begin thinking in terms of making changes?
Yeah.
All right, good. That was, that was my hopeful goal that we could get to.
Yeah. And I just wanted, that's why I did the table, to give a general idea.
Yeah.
Before spending time doing specifics. Yeah.
Okay. Um, good. Yeah. With that then, John, you had some other things. I don't know. Maybe this was part of what you had in mind that you wanted to be discussing.
I, um, I wanted, I think it's important for the zoning commission to be aware of movements that are occurring, strategic movements that are occurring around the township that have implications for our future and for your role. And so we have worked diligently the last few years through the comprehensive plan and the zoning overlays to, um, prepare the township for, um, for growth, but also to protect the township from annexation to the very best of our ability. And I think Scott would affirm that the work that's been done is very good along those lines. Uh, however, understand, and so this has been communicated to me that there are people at a strategic level that are beyond township trustees and even beyond Delaware County Commissioners, et cetera, that may look at our township or any other township as an opportunity for economic growth and development. This is what happened in Jersey Township with Intel. And I think we should be aware that it could very well happen in Harlem Township. Then development is happening to us, not with us. Over the last few weeks, we've become aware that, uh, the city of Westerville uh, has, has been very interested. They've approached Columbus about, uh, annexation into Harlem Township. They have been talking to large landowners in Harlem Township. They're looking concretely at our southeast corner. And I absolutely, if I was the development director in Westerville, I'd be looking really hard at Harlem Township because this is their avenue for future growth to get across the reservoir. Um, the the city, they need to partner with the city of Columbus to make that happen. And so we have to think about, well, how do we act? How, how do we act in a way that I'll be harsh prohibits that? Okay. Well, as a township, we have limited ability to prohibit that. However, we can make, uh, relationships, we can have relationships with entities that can prohibit that. And in this instance, the specific entity that can prohibit that from happening is the city of Columbus. Uh, and so Holly and myself, Justin Manello, at first meeting Jim went to have met with the development director of the city of Columbus, Stephen, Director Stevens. And first, just to get a sense for how they respond to townships, how they interact with townships. What are their strategic goals? Which by the way, I think I said in a trustee meeting, their number one strategic goal when they approach a township is a, is annexation. And I appreciated his honesty in this regard. And their second strategic goal is affordable housing. And their third strategic goal is a growth corridor through our township to Licking County. That could be, that could be a green space kind of thing like the Metro Park. They do plan on annexing the Metro Park in the near future. Uh, what we would need from them is an agreement that they do not annex into our township. That they're willing to, um, have a relationship with us. That that relationship includes an, an agreement with Delaware County and the city of Columbus and Harlem Township in regard to infrastructure development, i.e. sewer. Uh, that Columbus would be willing to provide not just for the lower tier of our township, but for the entire. Uh, that Columbus would be willing to provide not just for the lower tier of our township, but for the entire township through their trunk line. In that this would include uh, an arrangement with, with Delaware County, particularly Columbus kind of wants Delaware County to go over toward the east across the county line, which the two oh eight currently shows. In a second meeting with the city of Columbus, they indicated clearly that they're interested in a a relationship with a non-annexation agreement. And we indicated clearly that we don't want Westerville to come across the reservoir. That's where the conversation is right now. And they asked for a third meeting, and, and the second meeting was at their impetus. We didn't, it was, they came to us. So if our strategic goal is to preserve the autonomy of the township, we want to remain who we are. And we want to maintain our physical integrity over time. The township has to have relationships with people that have the ability to help us get there. If we don't have a relationship with Columbus, we will lose our township. Because Westerville will offer them what they need, and they'll come across the reservoir and we'll be gone. And so the, the times require us as a township to be engaged with our neighbors. And we have to get comfortable talking about Columbus in New Albany, in Johnstown, et cetera, in Delaware County. And we, and we have to have, as our goal, we want to have good relationships with all of these people. We, we, they're not, they're not the bad guy. And we also have to overcome our um, reputation for being insular and not interested at all in growth. Because that's, that's our reputation. When you go talk to these people, they're like, what are you doing here? We don't think, we didn't think you want to talk to us. Um.
And that has been the case.
It has been the case.
For sure. I mean, they're not imagining that. That has been the practice. We don't want growth.
That's right. So my, so what does this mean for, for you? One is, I want you to be aware. And I plan on sharing this at the next trustee meeting because I don't want to have happen. I, I, I want there to be open and transparent communication. Nothing under wraps, nothing quiet. It's just out there, and we're going to have to deal with it, however hard it is to deal with. Um, but for this board, what you have to think about as the strategic planning process occurs and an economic development plan unfolds, you've, we've put zoning in place that we don't know whether or not it will actually sustain economically uh, the growth that's, that's going to be, that's gonna, that's gonna happen. Um, and the, the economic development plan will inform our zoning. So it may be that at the end of the summer or early fall, this board looks at the economic development plan, looks at our current zoning and says, you know what? We need to tweak some things. Because we're not generating enough income, A, B, C, or D, and so we can tweak to get to where we need to go. And I'm sure that there'll be recommendations from that economic development team toward that end. Um, but I, I see that kind of work on your horizon, right? And so I want you, I, I, I want you to be thinking about that. I don't want it to come as a surprise to you. Um, but the, the trunk line is going to be finished in July now of twenty six. Uh, Delaware has hired their planner for their portion of the trunk line. So we have a year or two here to really do some great planning and build some great partnerships. Uh, but it
What, what does a, a non-annexation agreement with Columbus entail? Would it, would it be Columbus schools?
No, no, it
No, they don't annex.
There's no Columbus. It means no Columbus.
No.
No annex No Columbus. No, they're not coming into
There's not annexation, but would they be? Would they then be putting in the sewers instead of Delaware County?
They don't, they don't want to spend any money on infrastructure in Harlem Township. And Delaware, according to the Polaris Agreement, has the rights to provide sewer to this township, to every, actually to everywhere, to every unincorporated area in Delaware County.
Yeah.
And Delaware's not going to give that up. And in fact, well, I just stopped there. They're not going to give that up. So
What do they gain from such an agreement with us?
What they gain is
Go ahead.
Right.
No, go ahead. I'll just say they're gonna want something.
Yeah.
I, I guess there's no specifics.
I, I'm gonna, I think, so a growth corridor. I don't know. So it'll be interesting to me to see, how do you define a growth corridor? What's that green space look like? But we did, we definitely said it's a green space, nothing else. I don't know how big it is. It's, I don't know. Um.
Well, but for them, if it's a growth corridor at some point down the road, they would be looking at annexing something into Columbus.
Or building, developing that green space.
Unlike, so strategically, Cincinnati and Cleveland are bound as cities because they, they're hemmed in by their suburbs. Columbus has always maintained a, these fingers that don't bind them in. Harlem Township, the, the Metro Park in Harlem Township serves as a means to get them to Licking County so that they can provide services to Licking County. Um, and that's a, that's an area of future growth and expansion. We asked them, are you interested in going up to to our northeast toward thirty seven? And they didn't express an interest in this. They, they really are looking directly east. Secondly, I think the, the concept of housing um, in wrestling with, I'm, if I use the word affordable housing, people go um, how do you provide across the township housing for new homeowners? And then second, third generation homeowners. And that's, that's an area where as a zoning commission, again, I think there's work to be done. Do we have any kind of a moral obligation, responsibility to provide that first tier housing, which to me, I'll toss out, you can get there with the same architectural standards, but smaller square footage to a to a home. And I'm, I'm just going to stop right there because I'm way past my area of expertise. But there's an area where I think there's a conversation that has to unfold. And then the third area is economic partnerships with uh, commercial and industrial entities that come into the township and can support economically what we're trying to do in other areas of the township.
And so Columbus might share in that economic growth?
Yes. Yep. Through helping you establish the relationship or supporting, supporting that relationship. Yes. In addition, um, s- same kind of conversation with the New Albany Company, uh, with the city of New Albany. City of New Albany is not interested at all in annexing into Harlem Township. And this is the beauty. We're, we're at a time right now where the only, the only entity that wants to annex is Westerville. This is, it's quite remarkable. Glean is willing to make a sewer deal. New Albany says, we're not interested. We'll help you plan. We just really care that you plan well. Columbus is like, yeah, there's some things we want, but we really don't want to annex into your township because we don't, we can't afford the infrastructure and we're focused inwardly right now, but we can help you stop Westerville.
I'm not convinced, Sunbury.
So I was, that's where I was going. Because I hadn't gone to Sunbury. Yeah, I think that Mike's right. So the, the question mark is Sunbury. So I, I had lunch with the mayor of Sunbury a month or two ago. We were really focused, the conversation on the Amazon data center. You know, his words are, or, or no, we're not interested in coming down across thirty seven. Uh, Mike's not convinced of that reality. I think others probably aren't convinced of that reality. But if we have a good relationship with them, and my thing would be, I don't want to see surprises. I think Trenton Town Township sells some surprises. But if we've got a, a dialogue that's occurring, and they understand where we're headed with our relationships. Uh, and this goes back to the idea of regional planning, which we've approached the county about, is, is that the county needs to be thinking regionally. And my opinion is that Harlem Township offers some regional solutions in, in this part of the world. That this, that this, these thirty six square miles can offer regional solutions uh, to needs that are beyond us. So I, I'm just opening a conversation tonight that you need to begin thinking about. Because this is going to impact us uh, sooner rather than later. Uh, and, and we're going to have to think in different categories than we have heretofore.
I was, I was aware, and it's it was done a number of years ago that Columbus and New Albany do have an agreement with each other that New Albany was going to go east and Columbus would have access to everything north of Walnut.
Um, the only thing Columbus wants to do is go across the Metro Park and get into Licking County.
When you say growth corridor, does that mean to get new customers? Or, I mean, that would actually be annexation at some point?
I, I think what that growth corridor is owned by, I would assume uh, to get into
Do they want more residents paying Columbus income tax?
That was not expressed. No, this, this was totally Metro Park. This was no growth in development.
Metro Park being all in Franklin, or?
I mean, if that was, if that was an extension of the Metro Park or another park or yeah. And so this, this is two conversations into it, right? Uh, the next conversation, Tracy Davies is going to go from Delaware County. She actually used to be the boss of the person that's uh, the deputy development director in the city of Columbus. So there's a good relationship there, which is crucial for us. Uh, they're going to bring their utilities person and their parks person and a couple planners. Um, and so I, I think it'll be a, a good conversation and there'll be greater clarity and, and better questioning on these things. I, I just want to be open about it, right? No surprises. So.
Yeah, let us know how it works, how it's, the next meeting goes and what develops.
Absolutely.
Let's update it.
Absolutely.
So that Columbus potentially then is looking at, you, you say a green corridor, meaning then that green space, meaning it would be parkland that could potentially provide that corridor.
That's how we, those are the words we've used to this date. Yes.
And they're not looking for a corridor going north. They're looking for a corridor going east.
That's correct. Yeah.
And this would be all along our southern edge? Or just little
Well, they, they get cleared to the, the park gets them cleared to Be- Bevelheimer without coming into the township.
Right.
So then it's from there on over, I think. I, I haven't, you know, I've just looked at the map. I can't with specifics.
They're not interested. I'm not quite sure how they're going to keep Westerville out of our southeast corner.
Because they own the reservoir.
What did, what did Columbus do? Or, and I'm assuming, I haven't looked for a long time, but see, there used to be a park there. Um, that would, on the um, west side of Schlepey, south of uh, county line.
Mm-hmm.
That was Columbus Park. What, is that land still there? There, it's not a park anymore. But I think it still belongs to the Columbus Parks. Am I correct?
I don't know.
So there is vacant land. I don't know how big it is, because years ago, like I said, it was a park. In fact, I can't, I've camp, I camped there with our kids. Uh, when they used to have a park there and we had, and in fact, it's in Westerville Schools, but it's actually belongs to the city of Columbus.
Yeah.
Because there were some uh, families that um, were staying in campers there that we had to provide education for. And because it was in the Westerville School. So we had a bus that was going in there at one time picking kids up because they were temporary. It was temporary housing for them. They were here in the summer, or the warm weather because they were migrant workers, basically, is what they're allowed to do. Um, but that, they closed that park down, and I'm not sure exactly why they did, but I don't know what they've done with the land other than the fact that it's still there.
I don't know.
Check out the, the auditor's website.
Yeah.
It's probably there. I haven't looked it up again. I haven't looked it up recently, but uh, uh, just wondered if that had come into any discussion, and apparently it hasn't yet.
So, you know, the, the reality is, and this is uh, you know, Bill, Bill Ebbing, who is the president of the New Albany Company, said to me, John, be aware that people at the, at the strategic level can sweep away all your plans in a moment's notice. And so if there was, uh, you know, someone at, at, at a state house level or in the federal level who looked at Harlem Township and wanted to put an industry production plant in our township and approached one of our large landowners to that end. And uh, you know, Westerville said, hey, we'll, we'll make a deal with Columbus. We'll annex into Harlem Township. We'll build this energy production plant on the, on, in the township and Columbus, we're going to let you have a sweet part of that deal. There's going to be very little we can do about that, right? So just, there, there are these this, this is the reality of the world in which we're in, and, and to sit here and to think, but we just want to stay rural, it's just not going to happen. Uh, th- this is Harlem Township is in the bullseye.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and there are entities outside of the state who are benchmarking us against other communities and determining whether or not they want to attempt to come here to put whatever. Uh, so.
John, we don't get um, trustees at our meetings very often. So while you're here, I was going to ask you, uh, we've been, we've spent a lot of time around the edges of
Yes.
you know, working on the overlay districts. And recently, we've, we've been working on a few overlay districts, kind of on the six oh five and, and a few others that are not around the edges.
Right.
What, what's your sense of the importance of those internal overlay districts versus the ones that are completed now around the ends?
So my personal opinion is that that all should wait until we've completed the strategic planning process, that that process should inform the work that you do on those overlay districts. Uh, and so whether that's up six oh five or in particular with Center Village, you're going to hear a ton of stuff from residents and from subject matter experts over the next several months that I think will help you in that work. Uh, and that it's premature to focus on it now. It, it really needs to happen after we get through this process. My personal opinion. I can't, I'm not speaking for the trustees. That's my
We're kind of, we're assuming that that's why the six oh five corridor was pulled.
Pulled, paused for the
So the, the medical thing was pulled because that was the trustee's opinion. The six oh five thing was pulled because Jim decided to pull it. So. But I concur with the decision. I, I think we probably have a different basis for our decision. Nevertheless, that's where we are.
Well, I don't think it was a bad decision either. I think it, you know, the fact that we're pausing that, it seemed like it needed to be the future decisions need to be tied into whatever's coming out of the uh, you can, you have been referring to it tonight as an economic development plan.
Yeah, so you
That's what it was originally, and then it seemed like the language started slipping away.
It's going to be a real economic development plan. Um, so Dana is going to do that with Montrose and really drill down into the township and, and get what, what, what are the real numbers for what this zoning is going to produce when it's built out over time, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years? That's the goal. And then you'll have a, you'll have a better basis for making decisions about zoning. That's going to occur in concert with the strategic planning that's occurring. It's really looking at land use and the big character issues and that kind of stuff.
Well,
I would like to express my view that when I hear economic development people talk about all the vacant land in Harlem Township, that agricultural land is not vacant land.
Well, Johnny.
It is, it is essential to have agricultural lands. It is, it is essential to have agricultural lands.
Yeah, we, we had a conversation with large landowners this past week. Significant landowners in the township and just tossing these ideas out. And there's a realization, because these are, these farmers and people who own farms are business people. They, they didn't flinch when we talked about these things and they understand that that hard decisions are going to have to be made. To, to what degree we're able to preserve, you know, will farming be preserved in Harlem Township? There's hardly anybody farming. Will hobby farms? Now that, that seems more reasonable, right? Will, will a community that has a farming experience, if you've got city kids that want to come out and experience a farm? So I, I love the wording that we have rural residential. But I don't, but I don't know that that's farming. In, as the, when we think about, there's a hundred acres and it's going to be corn, right?
I don't know. It still seems like we got
We do now.
Yeah, a number of packets that are either corn or wheat or
Yeah, but we were, I was even talking to, to a long-term landowner who's, he's saying, look, when, when the, when the kids inherit the farm and none of the kids live in the state, you know what's going to happen?
Yeah.
That's the harsh reality.
That's the harsh reality.
Longest we have farmers farming in Harlem, we're good. But if the farmers in Harlem are selling, they aren't selling to farmers. Not at the price they're getting. It's going straight to developers and it's going to change.
I would, I would like to see more effort from the trustees encouraging things like selling development rights to, you know, preservation parks or something like that. So you sell development rights, but you still can, you know.
I think this is part of our strategic planning in the parks. What I've said to the parks guys is you need to think about parks on a township scale. How many parks you want in the township? Where do you want them? What purpose do they serve? What's the demographic they serve? In getting together with Delaware County in this regard, et cetera. We need to think big along those things. I completely agree with you. And you may be able to talk to some of these large landowners and say, hey, would you be willing to give us to donate to the township for a park? And we'll name it for you. This is the, this is the Gabriel Farm Park. Whatever, the Piper Farm Park.
I've been working on the Jacksons down in the corner of Bevelheimer.
Yeah.
And it's, it does have a bit of Rocky Fork going through it. So it's the kind of thing that would appeal to something like preservation parks. But he keeps telling us, well, it's going to be up to the kids' side. Yeah.
All right. I've, I've taken all Scott's time and he's wondering what he's doing sitting here.
Oh, yeah. We, I couldn't see the clock, but I see now we are past nine thirty. But thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Glad to have, you have had you here to share that because it's important for us to become aware. And oftentimes, we don't have that kind of a report that you've given us tonight. Well, we haven't had that kind of report in the past. So I appreciate your coming and, and giving us that information.
Yeah, and I will do so with the BZA and with the township in the March meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything else for tonight, but Scott will bring us back. And Scott, at this point, we anticipate doing the second meeting in well, I guess it'll be the second meeting in March. Is that going to be too soon?
Yeah. This is kind of
It's March.
That's pretty quick.
We'll start our first meeting in March.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's only
Two weeks.
Basically two weeks.
Yeah.
Or do you think that we should wait until April or schedule another special meeting?
I hate to go all the way to April, just because some of this is
April? Do you think that'd be good?
No.
He said he doesn't want to.
Said he didn't want to.
Oh.
Should we try to do another special meeting on like the 24th?
Of March?
Yeah. Or the 17th, the St. Patrick's Day, but I don't
Well, the 17th is the BCA meeting. They'll have their green beer and have their meeting.
So if we did, if we did the 24th. Did the 24th, then we
That's basically four weeks.
Our next meeting.
What's, why don't we plan to do that then? Schedule a special meeting again, then on 24th, it'll be relating to review of our zoning issues that we're dealing with. Articles 12, 14, and whatever we begin to look at with the signs and billboards. Okay.
Just signs, no billboards.
All right. That's our plan then for March and we will move this process forward. With that, how about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Louis, seconded by Tony to adjourn. Anyone further discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. We are adjourned. March. March, March. You said you didn't want to wait till April. So we're doing it March 24th. Four weeks from today.
Yeah, March from now.
Yeah. So we, do, do we need to keep our March 10th meeting if we're moving it to the 24th?
For right now, we will, because they'll see what comes out of March 3rd. We can cancel that meeting if we want to. If we don't have
I'm traveling that week and won't be able to make it.
If we don't have issues that we need to deal with, we will just cancel that meeting and go to the 24th. But I want to wait till the 3rd and see how that progresses. We, I don't know whether anybody's going to be bringing in something new in terms of another application.
So that would have really worked solid, probably.
Oh, thank you.
I don't, I don't
This was like two years ago. So you weren't even
Why don't you go shut off the recording now and
Yeah, I guess my
Then basically just turn off the monitors. Everything else stays on.
During the situation and you
Once you end the Zoom meeting It ended Zoom meeting will mean it'll start transferring it.